Thank you. Sarah, could we have a roll call for attendance?
Mayor View?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Present.
Mr. Barcello?
Present.
Mr. Douth?
Here.
Mrs. Perret?
Present.
Mrs. Schofield?
Here.
Mr. Schumsky?
Here.
Mr. Lamoth?
Here.
Mr. Gerard?
Here.
Mr. Bernard?
Here.
Mrs. Lopes? Mr. Zatella? Ten present, two absent.
Thank you. Public announcements by committee members, I'll start to my left.
All set, Mayor.
All set, Grace?
All set.
Sandra?
Just if any of the students are going out for the Halloween festivities, to please be careful and again to be careful as you're crossing the street and be aware of cars coming and going, look both ways just as a safety precaution. Thank you.
Thank you. Jay?
Thank you, Mayor. I too just wanted to wish a happy early Halloween to all of our students and just encourage, you know, not just our students to make sure that they are as safe as possible, but you know, for the adults who may be out and driving around, just understand that in a world where children are forced to grow up much quicker than they should be, that Halloween is, you know, one of those few times that they still have to enjoy. And so please pay attention to the roads and make sure that our kids are able to safely enjoy the Halloween festivities. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron, thanks. Oh, Ron's here. Just a point of information. Ron, you have the floor.
All set. Thank you, Mayor.
David?
I'm all set, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And joining us remotely, we have Doug Gerard.
No comments this evening, Mayor.
And Tim Wagner.
No comments this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I do have one thing I wanted to share, and I think it's very important to mention to the viewing audience and those who are joining us here in present and to fellow school committee members, we're having our 2023 Spooktacular. It's going to be held October 26th from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Zot Park. Again, October 26th from 4:00 to 7:00. I believe there's over 60 vendors and it's probably the safest way that we I've ever seen to trick or treat. It's going to be a lot of fun. There'll be, I believe, hot dogs that are going to be passed out by Chicopee Fresh. City councils will be there, I believe, giving out cider. And there'll be performances. Our bookmobile will be there. Our fire department, of course, our police department will be joining us as well. I invite all members of the school committee, their administrative teams, and all of our students and faculty to join us. The event is getting bigger and bigger and we're hoping to see probably closer to 3,000 people this year. So a safe alternative to Halloween. Hope to see you all at our Spooktacular 2023. Dr. Ware?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, school committee members and those joining us from home. I'd like to just take a quick opportunity to share with the school committee and the public about the 4th grade class at Fairview, Ms. Riordan and Ms. Kuchensey's class. They wrote me letters saying that they wanted to explain what the first day of school was like, and I do want to read one quickly if the committee will allow me to. It's from one of the 4th graders. She says, "Dear Dr. Ware, welcome to Chicopee. I hope you are ready to hear the most awesome first day ever. I was nervous on the first day of school, really, really nervous. When I walked into my class, the first person I saw was my beautiful teacher, Ms. Riordan. She is amazing. Finally, I found out my teachers are awesome and amazing. I mean, really awesome and amazing. That is why this is the most wonderful day ever." So I received over 20 letters like that and it was just a very happy day. So I want to give a shout out to the 4th grade class over at Fairview and I will be going to visit them. They would like for me to come read, so I think that anytime we are asked to speak to literacy or numeracy, you answer the call of duty. So I will be seeing them shortly. I just want to say thank you to them for that. I just want to give a shout out to the high schools. I wasn't able to get to many of the open houses this year, but I was able to attend Chicopee Comp, Chicopee High, and Chicopee Academy. And parents, it was really great seeing the parents interact with the students and staff. And so I just want to say that's always a great feeling to have a nice turnout. And then lastly, I just want to say thank you for the staff at Strieber and also at Bo were very nice and welcomed me, saying happy bosses' day, which was this week. And so give a shout out to those two schools as well.
Thank you, Dr. Ware. We would now normally open up the meeting to public input. We have no one signed up, so we'll go right to our visitors, the Student Advisory Council. Welcome to city hall.
Good evening, Mayor View, Superintendent Ware, Assistant Superintendents Cruiser and Belleville, and esteemed members of the school committee. Our names are Dwayne Barker.
And Huda Said.
And we are members of the Chicopee Student Advisory Council. We are here with some of our members and our advisors, Vice Principal Petrikowski from Chicopee High School, Vice Principal Boya from Chicopee Comp, and Mr. Rodriguez from Chicopee Academy. We were all elected by our respective student bodies. This year, we are excited to have five voted members, two from Chicopee High School, two from Chicopee Comp, and one from Chicopee Academy. The elected members are Academy Brendan Kessler, Chicopee Comp Caitlin Janko, Zadriana Citron, CHS Dwayne Barker, and Maria Ferretti. And we also have four additional alternates who participate in our meetings and are excited to support our initiatives. These members are Zaden Gonzalez, Huda Said, Noah Gallus, Brandon Sanchez Bennett, and Sophia Guzman. One of our next steps is to elect a president. We have had one initial meeting during which we spent time to get into know one another and discussing our priorities for this coming year. We also distinguished school-based issues from issues that affect all three high schools. We are currently designing a survey to see what students would like us to prioritize. We're excited for this year and looking forward to representing the students in the high schools this school year. If you need us for anything, please feel free to reach out to any of our advisors and we will be happy to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in. Approval of minutes 23-10-8.
Move that the minutes of the regular meeting of the school committee held on October 4th, 2023 be approved.
Don, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Schumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Ten yes.
Motion carries. Reports 23-10-9.
Report on personnel action taken. I'd like to invite Ms. Deb Green up to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. Your personnel report tonight contains 12 new hires. Three of those are teachers, four of those are paras. We have also moved to orientation once a week as the hiring season is slowing down. We have also recently completed an audit of the postings that are out on school spring. So we have 70 openings currently out on school spring, 26 for teachers, 20 for paraprofessionals. And of those, 16 of those postings are for new positions. The retirement on your personnel report was addressed in May. That is Mrs. Karen Fave. She retired in the middle of September, so we wish her the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. New business 23-10-10. Oh, I'm sorry, Sandra. I didn't see your hand. I apologize.
Just, we have some conferences that are being attended by seven staff members and some of them are virtual, some of them are local, and the topics are the MCAS Science and Tech Engineering, MCAS Update for Teachers with Experience, Educational Stability Orientation, a Social Work Conference, and a School Psychology Association Fall Conference. And another one is Anxiety, Sleep, and the Brain. So it sounds all exciting.
Thank you. Any other discussion? New business 23-10-10.
Move that the bills warrant S-100623 totaling $963,381 and 24 cents be approved.
Grace, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Any discussion? Sam, could you please read the warrants into the official record?
Yes. So I will read the total of both warrants and we will act upon each individually.
Sam, could you just get your... Thank you.
Yep. For athletics, $20,064. Food services, $185,678. General expenses, $239,056. For grants, $636,934. For maintenance, $204,029. Special education, $230,704. Student activities, $2,624. Transportation, $152,651. Telecommunications, $9,782 for a grant total of $1,681,526 million.
Thank you. Any further discussion on... We'll be voting on the first warrant. That's S-100623 totaling $963,381 and 24 cents. Sarah, could we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Schumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Ten yes.
Motion carries 23-10-11.
Move that the bills warrant S-101323 totaling $718,145 and 24 cents be approved.
Sam, could I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion on the second warrant? Sarah, could we take a roll call, please?
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Schumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Ten yes.
Motion carries. New business 23-10-12.
Move that the following job descriptions be approved, A, K-12 Health and Wellness Liaison, and B, Educational Stability Liaison.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, we have a motion to approve?
Yes.
On the motion, I would like to first hear from Dr. Ware.
Yes. And so, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to actually take this back to the E-Team and also possibly for more discussion. There's some things that have come to light and I would like to take some time to review those items before I present it back to the agenda.
Recommendation if it would be willing to be made by the motion maker to postpone?
Yes.
So we have a motion to postpone. Any discussion? Sarah, please call the roll.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Schumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Ten yes.
Motion carries 23-10-13.
Move that the request from Dupont Middle School for 50 students to travel to Washington, DC, June 4th, 2024 through June 7th, 2024 be approved.
Doug Gerard, can I get a motion?
Yes, motion to approve.
No motion to approve. Any discussion? Dr. Ware?
Mr. Indalos from Dupont Middle School is here. I would like to welcome up to the podium to speak a little bit about the trip, if you don't mind.
That'd be great.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me tonight. First of all, Happy Unity Day. Thank you for the orange out in the audience tonight for our anti-bullying prevention month. It's nice to see the orange today. First of all, this is a trip that's been on the books for many years. I've been on the trip myself back in our days at Fairview Middle School. The value in the trip goes well beyond taking a trip. The civics education value to that trip is enormous, and I'm glad to see it was brought back and then COVID hit and then the whole glitches around that. So Mr. Shonowski, I give my kudos to Mr. Shonowski, my social studies teacher in 8th grade. He spearheaded the research right now to bring this back to Dupont. And we've had several parents, not because we promoted it, not because we talked about it, but they reached out to me directly and asked me to try to bring it back to Dupont for their 8th grade kids. We would have liked to have done it last year, transition year, trying to get things going, systems and structures and all that, but this year I thought was a good time to at least present it. So we put it out there to all of our 8th grade parents. 50 parents came back and said, "We want to do it." I have probably five or six parents that have been reminding, messaging me left and right, "Where are we at?" So I know the excitement's out there for it. So Mr. Shonowski, we put together a couple of quotes. We got a couple different companies. What we found was more companies are getting away from bus trips and they're doing plane trips. That obviously raises the price. So what you have tonight is through Explorica, and that is a traditional bus trip. If we went with a company such as EF, and this is no disrespect, just giving you a comparison, it was $2,300 a student because they were going to get on a bus to get on a plane, to get on a bus, to get to the hotel in Washington, DC. That's $2,300 is a lot. The trip you have before you is, I have to adjust the prices, so I apologize, because we did not lock in before September 28th. So the price now is $992 a student. There is a little caveat to that. We have to have 50 students to keep it a private tour. If we go below 50 students, the price stays the same, but we co-op with a different school or district. Not a fan. So right now, we're at 50 students, but we haven't officially put it out there as we are doing this. So I'm gathering that we're going to get some additional interest if this goes forward. A couple of big things is 50 is that number to hit, and there is a margin of error. So let's say three or four students cannot go on the trip for whatever reason. We drop down to 47. Once we've agreed, once we sign the contract and we start with 50, we're good to keep that private tour if we drop. Here's where the gray comes in. Well, if you drop to 10 or 11 or 12 students, it's a different story. So bottom line is, it's the bottom line. How to make it fiscally work for them to do it if we drop to 40, 38 students? So as long as we keep it in that realm of 45 to 50 students, I think we're in good Before I get a question on this, because I know it might come up, what do we do about cancellations? What happens if something comes about? I happen to have the 24-page document on their cancellation policies and the what-if policies. I won't go into them, but there's a lot of contingencies, usually within 30 days. If something happens within 30 days, you're good. There is a protection plan that's about $16 per day, per student, that they can purchase, and they're covered by a lot of different things, events that happen and take place that they're covered by. Obviously, weather is not something that is covered unless it's a named storm 30 days in advance or as soon as it becomes a named storm, something from the insurance company in here that's all in there. But if you need answers to that, I can certainly provide copies of that to you. It's a three-night, four-day trip. We used to do four nights, five days, and it used to be about $800 a student for that trip. Obviously, everything's gone up, so we cut it down to three nights and four days to make it fiscally responsible, but also still get the value being down in Washington, DC. If it's approved, we are going to try to reach out to Congressman Neal's office again. We were fortunate, the year that I went with them, we got a White House tour, the whole shebang with the Capitol and the White House tour. We got to sit in there. Yes, we did. It was quite fascinating. So we're going to try that again if we can get that forward for our students. So with that said, I'll take any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Principal Indalos. Any questions or comments? It sounds like a very educational and rewarding trip for many students, hopefully a time of a lifetime for many, a memorable one. Question, Don.
Yes, you said that they're going more to plane trips. So right now, we have a bus. That's fine. Is it possible to look at a train trip if it came to that?
I haven't, I haven't, we haven't seen that from...
Just put it in the back of your mind, that's all.
Yeah, we haven't seen that in any of the quotes with the companies. It's either a bus or a plane, bus and plane, or a bus, plane, bus. But we haven't seen that yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Grace?
Yes, I was excited to see this on the agenda. I agree totally with everything you said with, as far as the experience lasting a lifetime. I know that both of my sons have participated in it and I was also happy to see the payment plan, so that it's manageable for kids, monthly payment plan. Is it possible that we get a copy of the cancellation?
I certainly can, yep.
Okay.
I talked to Sarah about that today and like, it's 24 pages. I don't know if they want to see all 24 pages right now, but we can certainly get that to you.
Electronically?
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely. Save a tree.
All right, thanks.
Any other discussion or questions or comments? Sandra?
Do you have a sense of how many students are interested now or they've just, parents have just reached out to you?
So right now, we did a Google Form survey. I have 50 parents with their students that have, I won't say signed up, but they want their child to go to Washington, DC on the trip. Right now, we have 50. And that we did not publish it as a trip as planned. We published it as, "Here's a survey of interest. If you're interested, if the possibility arises."
And you have quite an agenda filled with the educational sites of DC as well as some fun things like an optional evening ghost tour and a venture to the International Spa Museum. So it's very nicely set up, so.
It's a great, it's a great trip. I went, my first time was with the graders at Fairview Middle School, and I went back a second time with my family because it was, it was that rich.
We might inspire a young person to enter the political arena.
Could be.
Could be. Thank you.
Jay, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm also, you know, I went on the Washington, DC trip when I was in 8th grade and it was, you know, certainly memorable and something that was great to experience. And again, I'm also quite happy to see, you know, that a payment plan is an option. Does Explorica, or do you know, is there any way to kind of subsidize for any people who might not be able to afford the trip or, you know, and are interested in it? Do they offer anything or is there any way that you know of to kind of subsidize that?
So that actually came up from a parent already, one of the parents that messaged me and already took the spearhead and said, "I will help with any fundraising possible for students that can't afford it or a scholarship that deserves it, is, has earned it, that right, that privilege, and we can help them out financially for those families." They don't provide that vehicle. They'll help you generate ideas, but we have, we have ideas to do it, whether it be, you know, dining out nights locally with local businesses to get some money here and there. There's other fundraisers that have approached us from the PTO end that we did not select for the PTO, but could be viable options for this group of parents to help fundraise for themselves. So there's, there's ways to go about it. They'll give you an idea, but it won't be, it's not something that they lead.
Thank you. That's great to hear, you know, that we're able to hopefully kind of put something together. And if it's something that brings the community together as well, it's a win-win. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Sure, Ron?
I want to thank Mr. Indalos for bringing this back. Back in the day when I was teaching at Fairview, I ran this trip for several years and it was very rewarding from an adult standpoint and also very rewarding from the student standpoint. I've run into some students that I had back in the day, and one of the things they bring up is, "Remember when we went to Washington, DC?" So something that y'all always remembered. And so I'm strongly encouraging that we do this for them. I thank you so much, Mr. Indalos, for bringing this back. Glad to see it come back. And kudos for Mr. Shonowski. You know, we worked together for a lot of years and he does a great job, so. And that's it on that, I guess.
I mean, this wouldn't have happened without Mr. Shonowski, and kudos to not only Mr. Shonowski, but we have three other teachers that, "I'll go. I'll do it." And it's not an easy trip to chaperone. If you've been on it with students, it's not an easy trip. It's a 24/7 job, but you get a lot out of it with the kids. So it is something that we'll have an administrator going on the trip as well to oversee it because we are going 800 miles away to have that peace of mind.
Sure, Grace.
Yeah, that raised a question that I have. I want to know what was the chaperone to student ratio?
So it's a 10 to 1 through Explorica.
Okay.
I've had a few parents reach out as well that have said, "What if I want to go as an adult?" There is a fee, as you see on your, on your form, there is an adult fee, but as far as the chaperone part, in my experience, and Mr. Bernard, you could probably say it as well, having staff members be the direct lead over groups of students provides us the best supervision for accountability, in my opinion.
And the other question I have, thank you, that makes sense to me. In the event that you weren't able, you know, once it becomes official and you weren't able to sustain the 50, would it be possible to reach out to Bellamy, Social Studies Department, and maybe like, it's just an idea.
Yeah, listen, they're all Chicopee residents, right? I mean, I'm game for whatever works. We could obviously work with Mr. Holt. I mean, Dr. Ware would ultimately come back to you to say yea or nay, or how do we want to work that, but whatever we can do to get our kids more opportunities and exposure and experiences, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Thank you again, Principal Indalos.
Thank you so much.
We're excited about the trip.
Thank you.
We have a motion to approve. Any further discussion? We'll take a roll call.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Schumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Ten yes.
Motion carries 23-10-14.
Move that any member of the school committee wishing to attend the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Joint Conference November 8th through 10th, 2023 be approved to do so. Excuse that typo.
Sandra, can I get a motion?
A motion to approve.
Well, I apologize. It was, you already did one, but that's okay. We have a motion to approve. Any discussion? I was out of order. Any discussion? We'll take a roll call.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Mr. Schumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Doubt?
Yes.
Mrs. Perrett?
Yes.
10 yes.
Motion carries, 23-10-15.
Move that the Career and Technical Education Department be authorized to accept the donation of a 2024 Mustang GT convertible from Ford Motor Company and Markov Ford.
Tim, could I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Any discussion? Very exciting motion and a very exciting order.
I know we received a letter from Mr. Ingram regarding this, and perhaps Dr. Ware could read that into the minutes for us?
Absolutely. So Mr. Ingram sent an email, given a little bit more background. So Ford Motor Company and Markov Ford are excited to offer a 2024 Mustang GT convertible as a donation to your program. This vehicle was involved in flooding at the Flat Rock plant and cannot be sold, but has been cleaned by the dealership in preparation for donation. Students will have the ability to work on new electrical and mechanical control systems found in new cars today. Testing and diagnosing with the school's extensive computer diagnostic controllers will provide our students with additional competencies to give them a competitive edge in the market. Estimated value market, estimated, estimated value, $30,000.
Any further discussion? Sandra?
Sounds like a wonderful project that the students will be involved with. So thank you to Mr. Ingram for reaching out to Markov Ford regarding this.
Any further discussion? Just a point of information, I will be writing thank you letters to Ford Motor Company and Markov Ford on behalf of the committee, if that's the will.
Please.
Thank you. Sarah, we'll take a roll call.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Mr. Schumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Doubt?
Yes.
Mrs. Perrett?
Yes.
10 yes.
Motion carries, 23-10-16.
School attendance zones rezoning. Topic requested by Mr. Wagner.
Tim Wagner?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move this to be placed in the next agenda for the Policy Subcommittee.
So we have a motion to place in the Policy Subcommittee. Any further discussion? We'll take a roll call.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Mr. Schumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Doubt?
Yes.
Mrs. Perrett?
Yes.
10 yes.
Motion carries. That concludes our meeting. Can I get a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. We'll take a roll call to head into adjournment.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Mr. Schumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Doubt?
Yes.
Mrs. Perrett?
Yes.[1789.33]